Number three, water and wastewater operations overview by Diana Langley.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You have water up there?
I do have water up here, actually.
All right, you're going to need it.
I'm prepared.
All right.
Before I get started, I'd like to just point out some of the staff here in the audience. So I have Ben Moody, who's a Deputy Public Works Director for Engineering. Mandeep Chohon, who is a senior engineer with the department, and he primarily does the majority of the utility projects. And then far right, we have Dan Poe, who's the Chief Plant Operator at the Wastewater Treatment Facility, and then Dave Collender, who's a Water Treatment Plant Operator at the Water Treatment Plant. So the purpose of the workshop tonight is to present a general overview of the water and wastewater functions. Items I will cover include water supply and system overview, wastewater system overview, a financial overview, rates, connection fees, outside connections, and capital improvement program. So to start with water, the primary source of water for the city is surface water from the Feather River. There's also a groundwater well at the Water Treatment Plant that is used to supplement surface water during drought conditions. This last drought that began in 2013 is the first time that the city's had to continuously operate the well in order to supplement supplies. The city is able to withdraw water from the Feather River under two appropriative water rights and two water contracts. Appropriative water rights are administered by the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Water Rights, and have an assigned priority date based on when the water right was initially applied for. Water users with the earliest appropriation dates have higher priority to use water. Water users with a later date are lower priority can use waters as long as they do not infringe on the rights of others. So the License 13855 was issued in 2012. Originally, it was a permit. It allows the city to divert water from January 1st to July 1st and September 1st to December 31st of each year. Permit 18558 has a lower priority than the license. It may be diverted, water may be diverted from January 1st to June 30th and October 1st to December 31st. Because this has a lower priority, it's often curtailed, which means that a lot of times in the spring, we have to stop using it around the late April, early May timeframe. There's no cost for water taken under these appropriative water rights. In addition, we have two water contracts. So you have the North Yuba Water District Contract that was executed in 1965 that provides for up to 4,500 acre feet per year. It's used for summer supply, and the contract term is through 2035. The cost is approximately about $75 per acre foot. In addition, you have the State Water Project, which the contract was executed in 1963. And again, the city primarily uses this water for summer supplies. The contract term is through 2038, but their DWR is currently in negotiations to extend the contract. The 2019 cost for this water is $756,500, and we pay regardless of our water allotment. Whatever the water that the city does not use under the State Water Project, the city is allowed to bank. And so when I say "bank," the water is stored in the San Luis Reservoir. That's where they consider storing it. And then during years that we need additional water supply, we can use that banked water to supplement our supplies. Even though we're withdrawing it from the Feather River just south of Orville, the State Water Project considers me banked at the San Luis Reservoir. So for reference purposes, going into 2019, we currently have 5,485 acre feet of banked water. So it's important to note on this slide, the maximum allocation versus the reasonably available volume. So the maximum allocation would assume that we had 100% utilization of our rights and then our water contracts. When you add in the well, that totals 31,840 acre feet per year. However, because the State Water Project allocation is reduced, I'm not going to say often reduced, it's reduced, we don't receive 100% allocation under that contract, the reasonably available volume is 28,190 acre feet per year. So looking at historical water usage for the last 10 years, you can see not only the impact of the drought, but how also water demand compares to water supply. So 2013, oh, Carol, I think we lost the battery on this. 2013 is about when the drought started. And then you can see that from the years on, from there, we started to get mandates from the governor in terms of requiring conservation. And so you see a reduction in the water use. You can also see from this graph that when you compare our water demand to reasonably available volume, there's still quite a bit of capacity there. Moving on to the, look at the 2000--
Diana.
Yes, excuse me.
I should have asked you this before. How would you like questions as they arise? Would you like it at the end or as we go?
Oh, please, as we go.
I have one right here. I'm about to go back a slide or two.
Through the mayor. Thanks, Diana. On the previous slide, just on the banked water, just a curiosity, is that subject to reduction, or should we be able to count on that?
We, I can tell you through this last drought, we were able to count on that, and that's actually what helped us get us through the drought. So in addition to the well water, we use that banked water. Now, when we had the record water in 2017, once San Luis Reservoir spills, because it's full, our bank goes away. And so we're zeroed out. And so 2017, we started new again. So between 2017 to now, we have been able to carry over water for two years.
Thank you.
Okay, so looking at the water demand, the purpose of this slide isn't so much to show the actual demand, it's to show you the time of use in terms of the months, as expected, the summer months are much higher than the rest of the year. But the key purpose of this is to show how those permits and licenses supply the non-summer demands, so spring, winter, fall. And then you have the State Water Project and the North Yuba Water District Contract supplying the summer water. What's also key with this is that, you'll see why this is important when I get into supply versus demand for the future. So to set the stage for the next slide, I'm going to talk about near term. So as we went through our latest water master plan update, we looked at build-out and then we looked at a near-term scenario. And so under the near-term scenario, we assumed the development of the El Margarita Master Plan, which is this area right here, from George Washington Boulevard to the east edge of the plant, so not the entire plant area, the east portion of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, Walnut Park West, Sutter Heritage Master Plan, and then also Bog Stewart Master Plan. Because we wanted to see if those were to develop, what would the water demand be? So by build-out, the city's existing supplies will not be adequate to meet existing needs, and additional future water supply will be needed. In a single dry year, a multiple dry year, so a single dry year would just be kind of a blip on the radar where your winter water is less than expected, but a multi-dry year would be this last drought where you have multiple years of drought. So under those conditions, we would have, be deficient in the near-term scenario as well as the build-out scenario. Another factor that needs to be considered into this is the time of use restrictions on the city's State Water Resources Control Board license and permit. So this table assumes that we have full access to all of the water, and which means we would need to maximize our water rights. So what does that mean? That you would use 100% of your allocation during the winter water, even though your demand's not that high? And then you would need to fully utilize your summer demands. And so one way that you could do that is through aquifer storage recovery, where you actually draw water from the Feather River to maximize your winter water supplies. You inject it into a well, and then it creates a plume within the aquifer. So then during the summer, you can withdraw that water to supplement your summer water supplies. So here's a graphic that shows that option. And so you have this ASR well, so you have confining layers, so the water doesn't migrate. And you inject it, the treated water does create a little bit of a buffer with the groundwater because they have different chemical characteristics. You'll have a little bit of a mixing zone, but for the most part, it will stay separate. And then you can withdraw that water during times of use to then supplement your supplies.
Question, Diana?
Yes.
So that description there, if we back up, that technique to maximize winter usage, drawing out of the river and storing it for later, even though we're not using our maximum during the winter, does that table that shows that we are deficient on build-out take that into account, or is that a way to combat that?
No, that takes that into account.
Okay, thank you.
So it assumes that you're using 100% of the State Water Resources Control Board license and permit.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So options to meet future demands would be additional groundwater wells. But with that, you would need to do point source treatment, most likely, where you have treatment plants on-site to address water quality issues. Purchase additional water supplies. I can say during this last drought, we had worked with another provider to look at purchasing additional water supplies, and we were looking at a cost of about $400 per acre foot, which is very high. And then implement additional water reduction measures. At that point, when you're in a single year and multi-year drought, that's assuming that you're putting your water shortage conservation plan into effect, and you're putting your conservation measures into effect. This would have to be in addition to that. And so that would be very painful for everyone involved, so our customers as well as the city. And so as we move forward into the future, and I also want to note that those demands are assuming that we meet the state's requirements for water usage. So the governor's latest "Water is a Way of Life," it assumes that that's taking effect. So key point of this is that as we move into the future, we will need to explore additional water options to serve build-out of the community and then serve near-term in a single and multi-year scenario. Regardless, all of these options are costly. So to move on to the water system overview, the Water Treatment Plant was placed into operation in 1969. It operates 24 hours a day, year-round, thanks to operators like Mr. Dave Collender over there. It was expanded in 1999 to 24 million gallons per day, and again in 2007 to 36 million gallons per day. The current permitted capacity is 42 million gallons per day. So for reference purposes, our winter demand is approximately 9 million gallons per day, and our summer demand is approximately 19 million gallons per day. So there's still quite a bit of capacity there at the plant. Here is an aerial shot of the Water Treatment Plant. It doesn't show. We have put solar panels in the easterly Sludge Lagoon, so this is a little bit of an outdated picture, but this provides an overview. You can see in terms of a treatment process, for reference, you'll see a slide for the Wastewater Treatment Plant in which you'll see a lot more treatment process functions. But for water treatment, pretty straightforward. What's, what is unique about the city's Water Treatment Plant is we have two different types of treatments. So we have membrane filters, and then we have conventional filters as well. Moving on to the water distribution system, we have approximately 265 miles of transmission and distribution mains. So transmission mains are the backbone infrastructure, and then the distribution lines are those water lines that are within the subdivisions. Sizes range from 3 inches to 36 inches, and the oldest lines date back to the 1920s. And so those older lines are in the key downtown area. So that would be Almond, Orange, kind of bounded by B Street to the south, Highway 20 to the north, Cooper to the west, and then Plumas to the east. But those are all very small diameter galvanized pipe lines. We also have six storage tanks. So before I move on to wastewater operations, are there any questions about the water operations?
Through the mayor. Ms. Langley, on those older pipes that are around the Plumas Street area, we replaced Plumas Street when we did the downtown district.
We did.
Are the pipes surrounding that in as just as bad as condition as Plumas Street was? And are we going to be looking to have to replace those in the near future as we did Plumas Street? Or what's the analysis on that at this point?
Those, I would actually argue those pipelines are probably in worse condition than the Plumas Street pipelines were before we replaced it. We do have some large transmission line, large traditional line that goes down Cooper. And so we have pipelines around it that are newer and in good condition, but we do need to replace those pipelines. We went through a few years ago and replaced all the sewer lines, which were about that era as well. We need to replace the water lines. Expensive project, and we, another reason to do is for fire flows for those neighborhoods as well.
And follow-up, do we have a projected timeline that you've put that out on the horizon that we need to complete those projects by? Is it health-sensitive to residents in that area? What is the current status of that? And have we projected that out five years, 10 years?
Okay, so there's not a health issue associated with it. In terms of, so through the rate structure that we have, we're collecting $1 million annually for pipeline, distribution system rehab and replacement. That also includes the tanks. So that million dollars does not go significantly far. One option would be to go ahead and do a larger project to replace it and use that money for the debt service to pay for it, like we did with the wastewater replacement project. The other option is to pay as you go. And so we have some other locations that the water lines need attention, but that is probably one of the highest priority project locations for us. It's just based upon the cost. We will need to come to council for input in terms of one large project that's financed or pay as you go to do, you know, a street at a time. What complicates it is those streets are concrete streets with very minimal drainage. We've already gone through and replaced sewer lines. We then go through and replace water lines. Then you need to address drainage, and then you need to address the condition of the street. So it's kind of, as soon as you open it up, you're opening a Pandora's Box in terms of everything that needs to be completed. So it really requires a more in-depth discussion about the direction to go and the scope of the project.
Through the mayor. Has Governor Newsom, I know it's a pretty fresh change, but have they signaled anything in regards to their water use plans? Are they going to stay with what the previous governor had in play? Or have you received any kind of heads-up on any of that yet?
I have not, I've not received any word that the, there's going to be relaxation of the water regulations. If anything, in terms of the Low Income Rate Assistance Program, I think that there could be more put upon California water customers, whether it's a bottled water tax, or an alcohol tax, or a tax, you know, increase on your property taxes or something like that. I know that they're looking at different options, but I don't see a relaxation of the current legislation for water usage.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will move on to wastewater. Also, I'd like to note, Mike Finnegan in the back, he is our Wastewater Treatment Facility Supervisor. Mike, if you could raise your hand. So the Wastewater Treatment Plant was placed into operation in 1972. Again, it operates 24 hours a day, year-round. Expanded in 2005, the current permitted capacity is 10.5 million gallons per day. The current average flow, 6.5 million gallons per day. And then you have about 11,000 pounds per day of solids into the facility. So going back to that picture of the Water Treatment Plant, here's a picture of the Wastewater Treatment Plant, and you can see it's a much more intensive process in terms of treatment. The wastewater collection system is comprised of approximately 173 miles of sewer mains that range in size from 6 inches to 42 inches, and the oldest lines date back to the 1920s. And we have 17 sewer lift stations throughout the collection system. The other thing I'd like to note is we have several lines that are still located in backyards. And so that becomes a maintenance issue as you're trying to clean these older sewer lines that are located in the backyards in terms of getting equipment back there. And so ultimately, what we would like to see is relocating those backyard lines into the streets. But that, of course, takes, takes time and money to do that. So any questions about wastewater before I move into a financial overview?
Through the mayor. Just curious still, from previous times, I know that SunSuite was like a huge user of water and also sewer. Is there any current percentage, or they, I mean, do you guys have that kind of information?
We do have that information. In terms of water, they are a large customer, but they're not the large, you know, they're not a huge percentage of our water consumption through the city. However, wastewater, if I remember correctly, in terms of the loading on the plant, they are about equivalent to the whole residential area of the city. And so we were tested a couple of years ago, and historically, SunSuite's only gone out of, down from operation for one week in December. A couple of years ago, they went down for an entire month, and it was like operating a brand-new plant. We had never operated the plant based upon that. And the operators and supervisors, it was a real lesson for them to see what would happen if SunSuite were to go away. It had a significant impact on our plant. Okay.
Through the mayor. I have a question, Diana. Having, I haven't had the opportunity to go visit both of your sites, but I'm going to go out there. I'm just curious, not just the wastewater, but on the water itself, that we pull in the water from Feather River, correct? And then how does that affect with the farming industry around us? And how do we work with, with our partners in that if there is going to be a shortage? Is there any of that occurring? That's my question.
So in terms of the water we draw from the Feather River, that's why we have the two water rights, and then we have the contract, so that we have the ability to draw the water illegally. We have to account for that water, so we report to the state on a monthly basis in terms of how much water we withdrew. We have meters on those pipelines so that we can accurately account for that water. In terms of other individuals that might draw from the Feather River, they would need to have similar rights to be able to do that. And so what happens is the State Water Resources Control Board controls that through their curtailment and the issuance of the permits, licenses, and then these other contracts that we have. Groundwater is a little bit different story. So under groundwater, we have the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And so we have worked with the, we're part of a larger group, including the county, and then many of the water irrigation agencies within Sutter County to, to monitor groundwater levels. I can tell you our well at the Water Treatment Plant is very deep. I think it's about 450 foot deep. And so our well's much deeper than surrounding wells. And so when we were withdrawing water during drought conditions, we didn't have any reports of impacting any adjacent wells. And then we also do have to do monitoring as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Because during, yeah, during the drought, when it was heavily being regulate, or, you know, the shortage, I often heard from, you know, the farming community that the groundwater was the most concerning and how to access and how the impacts of residential homes and trying to, I guess, lack for a better word, competing to, you know, for the usage and access of water.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so during the drought, the, we operated the well at the Water Treatment Plant, but we didn't operate wells anywhere else in the distribution system. And so any impact would have been up near the Water Treatment Plant. Like I said, that well's so deep. I did hear of issues with shallower wells from not only, you know, residences, but they weren't adjacent to our Water Treatment Plant in terms of the areas that I heard the issues with.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. Question, going back to SunSuite. I know that they're a good community partner here in the, in our local area. Have we had discussions with them as far as seeing what wastewater they can reclaim and reuse? It seems like it might benefit us on both sides if they're able to reclaim and reuse water. That would help us on the intake side to cut down with our resources. But then likewise, if they're able to reduce that on the outflow as well, that would cut down the burden on the wastewater treatment plant. Have we talked with them, looked and seen what they have? And from a business perspective, it would cut down their overhead. Has those discussions or anything ever happened with SunSuite? Do we know what they're doing?
They have happened with SunSuite.
Okay.
So as we were going through the rate studies, we met with SunSuite, because we were concerned about the increases to their rates because they are large customers, and so their rates went up significantly. We have talked to them about, from an operational standpoint, what can we do to help them not only reduce the amount of water that they're consuming, but also the amount of water that they're discharging. As part of our wastewater system master plan update, we will be evaluating options that we can do to assist perhaps with the biosolids that are generated from the plant. And so we have, I want to say we have somewhat frequent conversations with them. We also, through our pre-treatment coordinator, because they're an industrial permit holder for us, our pre-treatment coordinator works with them on a regular basis. And, you know, we try to stay in contact with them to see what partnerships we can form, and then how can we help them with their operations to try to minimize the water usage and then the water discharge? Because it also takes up capacity in our backbone infrastructure. And so if you're able to reduce the outflow from their facility, that means more capacity within your pipelines. As we have limited capacity in those pipelines, that impacts the amount of development that can go into those pipelines. So it's a benefit to all of us to work with them to try to reduce the usage.
And it's probably a vast contract because they are a contrast because they are such a large business here in our area. What would you say is, is there any other businesses in this area that are of that magnitude that we could also collaboratively work with? Because I'm just, I'm looking at both sides of the equation here. If we can cut down the intake, cut down the outtake, it saves our system and it builds in the reserves that we need. Is, do we have identified other potential businesses here that we could work with?
The other large industrial customer is Valley Fine Foods, and they are located down in that Garden Highway industrial area. They're not near the magnitude of SunSuite, but again, we have a pre-treatment coordinator. They have a permit with the city, and so our pre-treatment coordinator coordinates with them. They're, you know, they are metered, so we know how much they are using and discharging. And so, you know, we've tried to, as part of the rate study process, reach out to those industrial customers and establish contacts and relationships so that we can have those ongoing conversations of how can we help you and how can you help us?
Okay, thank you.
For the financial overview, the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds are separate enterprise funds established to account for water and wastewater utility transactions separate from the general fund. The revenue requirement is based on operating costs, debt service, and capital investment, with debt service being past capital projects that have been financed over time, and capital investment being ongoing capital projects that are pay-as-you-go. The revenue received is a combination of operating revenues and capital revenues. For water, their operating revenues include water sales collected through the monthly bills, backflow prevention fees, and interest on investments. Capital revenues consist of extension fees for water mains constructed in the roadway, connection fees, Hillcrest Water System surcharge, and interest on investments. So the Hillcrest System surcharge was established for the conversion of the former Hillcrest Water System to surface water, and so many of those customers pay surcharge on their monthly bill. For wastewater, the operating revenues consist of wastewater service charges collected through the monthly bills, septicage fees, lab fees, pre-treatment permits, and interest on investments. And the capital revenues consist of extension fees, connection fees, and interest on investments. You can see from these pie charts that the operating revenues right now are a much larger portion of our revenues than the capital revenues. That's because, a lot largely to do with the very minimal residential development within the city. If we were to see more residential development or more development in general with new connections, you would actually see the capital revenues being a larger portion of this pie. For the operating costs, they're broken down into variable and fixed. The fixed costs do not vary by the volume treated, while the variable costs depend on the volume treated. So examples of fixed costs. In our situation, a fixed cost is raw water. For other agencies, that's not the case, but that's because we pay for the water regardless of whether we use it. And then you have staffing, maintenance, and repairs. The variable costs include power, utilities, and chemicals. I wanted to include this slide just to show the number of full-time equivalent positions over the last 10 years. You can see the significant reduction between 910 and 1011. That's because there used to be a separate utilities department, separate from the Public Works Department, with the retirement of the Utilities Director. That department was merged with Public Works, and with the merger, some positions were cut. Also, it's interesting to note that if you were to compare the salaries and benefits from 910 to now, so for water, the, in 19, it was about 2.4 million. In 1718, it was about 2.7 million. So even though we have four and a half less employees, it's about $300,000 more in salaries and benefits. And then for wastewater, it went from about 3-- 3 million to 3.9 million. So, again, two and a half less employees approximately, but it's 9,000, about a million dollars, well, $900,000 more than then.
I have a question. When you speak of those positions, are those the positions identified in the budget, or are those the actual bodies that are actually working?
Those positions identified in the budget. So, if we were to look at the, um, there's, there are current vacancies within the department, so this doesn't account for those vacancies. These are just the budgeted positions. So, the Water Operations Fund revenues...
Diana, excuse me. So, how many vacancies do we have?
Um, right now, throughout the Public Works Department, I have approximately 10. If I were to break that down into utilities, it's approximately, uh, seven positions.
Okay, thank you.
So, for fiscal year 1819, the Water Operations Fund, uh, projected revenues of about 15.9 million, with operating expenditures of about 10.7 million. Um, the Water Operations Fund covers the water treatment plant and water distribution crew. And I think what's important to note on this slide is if you look at the salaries and benefits, it's about 27.3% of the operating expenditures. If you were to compare that to a general fund-funded department, you would find that the salaries and benefits portion is much larger. And so, really, for utilities, a large portion of the cost is truly supplies and services, and then your contributions to other funds. So, as I was preparing this slide, I, um, wanted to find out more about the contributions to other funds. So, actually, here's a breakdown of those contributions to other funds. So, you have a transfer to general fund, so that's for the support services to utilities. So, that would include, um, finance, fleet, HR, um, administration, engineering, all of those divisions that provide support to the utilities functions. So, it's, it's not, it's, in addition to the full-time equivalent positions specifically identified for water and wastewater in the budget, uh, for water, you have a transfer to vehicle replacement of 164,000. You have a transfer to the wastewater fund of 165,000. That's because of the lab. So, the lab is funded out of wastewater, but because they perform functions for the water treatment plant, you need to transfer that money to a cost for the water portion, and then transfer to debt service.
Me again. Through the mayor, um, the vehicle replacement, the transfers, is that for vehicles for utilities, or is that just a, uh, to the vehicle replacement fund in general?
That is vehicle specific to the water division.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, through the mayor, um, back to the transfer to the general fund, uh, 2 million going to the general fund. Have we broken that down further? You say it's for administrative staff and, and support services. How are we doing that allocation, and how are we truly knowing that we are allocating the proper, you know, expense against this fund? Because do we know that it's 2.016, or is it really 1.894? Can you explain how you're justifying that and, and how we're accounting for that kind of a transfer?
Yes. I will do my best to explain it, but I might need assistance from finance, or if I can't get that assistance, then I'll have to follow up if I don't explain it well enough. So, annually, the city prepares a cost allocation plan. And so, through that cost allocation plan, um, the departments go through, and I didn't, the general fund departments go through and identify how their people should be allocated amongst the different funds. And so, they put down the estimate of how much time and resources are going to be put towards that fund. Through that, they then come up with the total costs for what should be transferred to the general fund, and that's how they establish it. Now, at the end of the year, I don't know that they come back and do like a true-up to see if that was the actual cost, or if they just take the dollar amount directly from the cost allocation plan, and that's what gets transferred. So, that's where I would need a little bit of clarification, if possible, from Spencer Morrison in finance. Okay, so, it's the, um, it's the amount identified in the cost allocation plan, and it's not the true-up amount.
Okay.
Then, follow up...
I'm sorry, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I know it's the voice from over here. Apologies. Uh, just as a point of clarification, so Diana's department, for example, uh, has the engineering function, general fund function, uh, you allocate your, all of your engineers, do a direct allocation to projects, correct? So, if they're...
Well, we do a direct allocation to projects for engineers. We also allocate them to the Streets and Roads Fund, Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, General Fund, um, special, any other special funds that we might have. But then, we also have general utility functions. When a customer comes in off the street and says, "I'd like to connect to city water," how much would that cost? Well, then, that's staff time to help the customer to develop those costs. And so, what Ben does as part of the cost allocation plan is, you know, provide an estimate of how much time's going to be spent on all those different functions.
So, it's something that probably a whole, uh, there's, and Robin, uh, when she's, um, available in the future, can probably give a, even should the council desire, a really comprehensive overview of how this is done. But what's interesting is, absent, um, the support, you'd look at, uh, an independent agency that would need the human resources function, the finance function, a general manager. So, the benefit the general fund offers to the water and wastewater fund is to pay a portion of a human resources director, a portion of a finance director. And there's, uh, if you guys have gotten a feel for Robin, it's pretty minute in the detail of, uh, how this is allocated out to all the departments. So, as we go forward with this, um, another presentation certainly could be made in that regard as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up, um, uh, on this, and I appreciate the explanation, Spencer. Thank you. But piggybacking off what our city manager said, we really should be doing a true-up. We really should be doing a justification on what the departments are being charged because I get the fact that you set up your allocation, and you call it a wag, take your best guess, and you allocate it. But if at some point, either annually or every other year, do a true-up to see, we could actually be wasting funds inside of our water and wastewater, supporting other departments. And it could be that we've got too higher rates here, and we're not charging appropriately some, appropriately somewhere else. That's what I'm driving to. I totally understand balancing back and forth, Steve. I, I do accounting and, and finance as, as my profession, but we have to do...
So do I. So, we're in the same boat.
We're in the same boat. We gotta do the true-up at some point. And do you know when the last true-up was really done?
I don't know that.
We do. Just a, a point of clarification, this is where I really want Robin here, because you're getting into very good questions. Uh, if, if Diana has vacancies within her engineers, and there are a certain number of engineers that were assigned over to water and wastewater, Robin will adjust the allocation based on actual filled positions. So, she won't just do a blanket transfer. She does an adjustment. So, if you look at the budgeted amount versus the actual amount, there will be a change based upon that. To the degree she does that, it may not reach the level of detail that you're indicating. So, I don't want to overrepresent it, but I knew, I know that generally speaking, she does make sure that it's reasonably appropriate. So, yeah.
Thanks for hanging in there. Um, so, is, is this based on, maybe you might have the answer. Is this based on a percentage that is a standard percentage across the board for all departments for a transfer in a general fund?
No. So, as part of the cost allocation plan, um, so what happens is we get spreadsheets for each division.
Okay.
And we go through, and you actually have each position as a, as a row on that spreadsheet. And then, across the columns, you have all the different funding sources for the city. And so, what happens is the supervisor goes through, and based on position by position, estimates how much of that person's time's going to be spent upon each of the, uh, the revenue, the funding sources. And so, at the end of it, they total the percentage for each funding source to come up with a total dollar amount that would then represent that transfer. And so, it varies from year to year. Um, and so, it, it's truly a, a process of where they take, um, they put a lot of time and effort into it to try to estimate what the cost is going to be and what, what each individual person's going to be doing. Now, recognizing throughout the year, things change, and so, you could have people doing a little bit different function, so I understand the, the concept of the true-up. But, um, it is a detailed process. It's not just a straight percentage.
Okay. So, that's what I was trying to figure out, if it was based on the revenue or the actual expenditures. And if you look at just the actual revenue, it's about a 4.75%. So, um, I think we would definitely like to have more clarity on how that decision process is made, on when this, you know, these funds are being transferred into a general fund. And, and the agency where, where I work at, the state, um, sets the standard of what they call the indirect rate, which covers those things that you were mentioning on, um, you know, for paying for a little bit of Steve's time, paying for a little bit of Terrell's time, paying for those things that, you know, the air conditioning, the lighting, the maintenance of the room, that's what we tend to use. So, I'm thinking that that's a similar function of what you're utilizing these funds. But there's a standard of the percentage that, that is utilized, and I think that maybe we need to have further, you know, conversations about how that has come together.
Yeah, I think a great opportunity for that is going to be, um, as part of the budget preparation process, because these numbers are directly out of the budget. And so, as, um, Robin and her staff prepare the budget, that would be an opportunity to have discussions about how, particularly going into fiscal year 1920, those numbers were developed, and then as they're closing out the last fiscal year.
I think that'd be a great idea. Uh, Diana, the, uh, $2 million sitting there just generally transferred to the general, general fund is a pretty big number, and I can, definitely understand the questions. And I think it's appropriate for us to, uh, at least be educated or informed a little bit more detail as to where the...
And this is just the water portion.
Exactly.
The next slide will get into wastewater.
Yeah. We'll figure, probably the same question and request on the other end, too. But, uh, thank you for that information. Um, I know you're not a finance person, but you did a heck of a job explaining it.
Thank you.
And thank you for your input to Mr. City Manager. Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, now I'm going to switch, um, to water capital funds. So, if you remember, those are the extension fees, connection fees. With this, the revenues have been pretty modest over, you know, this, this, what they're projecting for this budget, so 1.1 million. The expenditures, 1.7 million. So, you can see there's an issue there. Your expenditures exceed your revenues. And so, um, a large portion of that is related to debt service. And so, your debt service payments exceed the revenues that you have coming in for extension fees and connection fees. And so, what happens is in that situation is that rates end up supplementing that debt service. But, uh, finance has, has been aware of this and presented this to council for the past several years, and they account for it separately. So, at such time as the capital revenues increase, they have an accounting of how much the rates have supplemented the capital revenues. I'm pausing here for a minute because this is off some of...
Just want to bring it back on center here. So, basically, what you're saying is, with more development, more connection fees, the, basically, the fund stabilizes itself, and we quit being dependent on the rates to do the debt service?
Correct. Well, we're less dependent on the rates doing the capital portion of the debt service.
Exactly.
So, speaking of debt service, here's a table of the debt service specific to water, so approximately 3.2 million dollars. Um, this table shows the original amount, the interest rate, the approximate annual payment, and then the final debt payment. So, you know, ranges from final debt payment in 2031 to 2035. Okay, now I'm going to move on to the wastewater operations fund. So, in fiscal year 1819, projected revenues of about 16.3 million, with operating expenditures of 12, about 12.3 million. On this one, you can see salaries and benefits are about 33.3% of the operating expenditures. Supplies and services, a, a lot more chemicals involved in this processing, so 4.6 million dollars. And, uh, contributions to other funds, 3.4 million dollars. And then, capital acquisitions. Capital acquisitions, of course, varies from year to year, depending upon the capital acquisitions that council approves. So, the breakdown of contributions to other funds, so transfer to the general fund of 1.9 million, transfer to vehicle replacement of 113,000, and then transfer to debt service of 1.4 million. Okay. Wastewater Capital Fund, again, the revenues are 634,000, expenditures 709,387. So, the revenue's slightly less than the expenditures. In this situation, we have a little bit of capital fund, um, I'll call it reserves on hand, where we're able to make up the, this difference. But it's only a period of time until that runs out, and then rates are supplementing the capital portion of debt service payments. And then, here is a table showing the debt service for wastewater. Again, the approximate annual payments, 2.1 million dollars, with the final debt payment ranging from 2025 to 2042. So, now, I will shift to rates. So, to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds for operation and maintenance, debt service coverage, and capital projects. So, that's the purpose of rates. So, the methodology used to establish rates is to identify net revenue requirements, analyze the cost to serve each customer class, such as residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, and determine the rate structure that will best meet the city's needs to collect rate revenues from each of those customer classes. So, key attributes of a sound rate structure include that they need to be as easy to understand from a customer's perspective, easy to administer from the city's perspective, promote the efficient allocation of the resource, be equitable and non-discriminating, in other words, they should be cost-based, provide continuity in the rate-making philosophy over time, and provide month-to-month and year-to-year revenue stability. So, those were the, um, that's the methodology and the attributes that were considered when developing the current rate structure. So, a key assumption that I want to note in the last rate study is that the customer growth is based upon 50 units per year. So, we went back and historically looked at how many residential building permits have been issued on an annual basis, and utilized, decided to use 50 units per year. Now, in previous studies, um, that number's been up, up to 350 units per year. But that 50 units per year, uh, we felt was realistic to assume in this last rate study.
I don't know if you mentioned it enough. I missed it. Um, how often are you doing these rate studies?
Oh, okay. Um, so, every five years. And so, the last one was approved through the Proposition 218 process in 2016. I have a slide up here that, uh, shows the history. The one prior to that was 2011. And then, there was a period of, I think, three years prior to that where we didn't have any, uh, rate study that covered that time period. So, you'll see that the rates just stayed flat during that time period. So, in 2016, as I mentioned, the city went through a Proposition 218 process to adopt new water and wastewater rates. Um, if you were in the city at that time, you know there was a lot of discussion about the different options that were presented, a lot related to the base allocation. And then, uh, where we landed is on this rate structure. And so, uh, this last year, council approved, uh, or for this last fiscal year, council approved rate increases. I want to note the, the rates shown for fiscal year 1920 and 2021 were based upon those recommended for those years in May of this, of 2018. So, when we went to council as part of the budget review process in May of 2018, we showed them not only the rates for fiscal year 1819, but also what we were projecting for the next two years. These have not been set. Um, this is just for reference purposes. So, this slide shows, uh, the water rates for a 1-inch meter, which typically covers all of our residential, uh, properties, single-family properties. Um, as you can see here... Terrell, this isn't working again. The Proposition 218 approved rate is 3949. The adopted rate for fiscal year 1819 is $35.84. In addition, there's a volumetric charge. So, for water, you have a base allocation, and then any usage over that base allocation, you're charged a volumetric charge. And so, the Proposition 218 approved amount is $1.98, and council, uh, set the rate at $1.84. For perspective, this table shows the breakdown of the city's current water meters by size. So, almost 95% of the city's meters are 1-inch or less. So, that includes residential, um, it would include some landscape meters for commercial properties. It would also include your smaller, um, commercial properties, whether it's an office building or something like that, that has, tends to have lower water usage. So, the monthly water bill is calculated. Again, um, you have a base rate plus the amount... Again, um, you have a base rate plus the amount over the base allocation times the flow rate. So for example, if you use 20 HCF, which 1 HCF is 748 gallons, your monthly bill would be your base rate of $35.84 for a one-inch meter, plus 5 HCF times that volumetric rate of $1.84 to get a total of $45.04. So here's the graph showing the water rate history for a one-inch water service over the last 13 years. So again, you can see that the 2016.
Sorry. Can you go back to that monthly water bill calculation? I feel like I'm looking at my cell phone bill and I'm not understanding some of the expenses. So walk, walk me through like I'm just, I am brand new, but I really never had a water bill before. So if I got my water bill, how am I going to interpret this?
Okay, so assuming that you have a one-inch water service.
Okay.
For a one-inch water service for $35.84, you can use up to 15 HCF per month. And so 1 HCF equals 748 gallons. If you use over that base allocation, you're going to be charged a volumetric charge of $1.84 per additional HCF.
Okay.
So if you use 20 HCF, you're going to have your base rate of $35.84, which includes that 15 units.
Right.
And then you're going to be charged an additional five units of water at $1.84.
So let's say I don't go over my 15. I'm going to be charged 35.84?
Yes. So regardless if you use 1 HCF or you use 15 HCF in a month, you're going to pay $35.84.
So if I have a leak that I have no clue about, hmm. It's a charge, right? So then I still, let's say my water bill now $200 and I've been conserving water all the time. So how do we remediate? Maybe that's a different topic at it. But I'm, that's usually the question that we get asked the most. I, I, I think most people that, when I talk to them out in, in their homes, it was the water bill.
Yeah, I would say if somebody has a water leak that they weren't aware of, where they're using a large volume of water and they're surprised when they get their bill, I encourage them to call finance to discuss that with finance. They can go back through the history and see, you know, is this, is this person really, uh, had an issue? Or has this been their common usage and they're just trying to, you know, get out of paying their bill? But a lot of times finance will listen to, um, we'll go, the history. They'll also go out and check the meter to make sure there's not an issue with the meter. For many of our meters, they're called profile head readers. And so we can go out and actually download the usage by, by time of day. So you can see when the issue occurred. But I will say the, the great thing is we have, um, the project to convert to cellular water meters. And so customers will be able to go online and look at their water usage in real time. And then there'll also be leak detection on there. So you can set it up that if a leak, if it seems like there's a leak that's occurred, not only can our staff be notified of that, but then also the customer can go online and see that there's perhaps a leak.
Thank you for explaining it. So scaling it down to basic knowledge. I appreciate that.
Diana?
Yeah.
Okay, um, years ago, when something like that came up, we were able to credit them. If it was a whoops, one time we were able to credit them. But on the Prop 218, uh, I was told we weren't allowed to do that anymore. We're, we're doing that again?
So Prop 218 is different. You're not allowed to do, um, supplement rates for low-income folks or senior citizens. It's that type of thing. So through, um, Prop 18, 18, you have to make sure that the costs are equitable to all classes. And so what we're talking about is if they have a leak and it's a situation where it really is, uh, you know, out of their control and it's found quickly. Finance has credited those, those customers' bills because it, you know, was outside of, it might've been outside of their control. But I will say we'll have customers that call and say, oh, I have a leak. But then you look at their history and no, that's been their water consumption, um, for many years. And so then you really have to do more investigation to say, did they really have a leak for three years? Or, you know, is this something that just occurred? And, um, yeah, so you have to do more investigation.
Okay, so, um, so for example, they got a $35 bill, water for 15 months. And we read the meter on the first and then the next, the first of next month, it went to, uh, $200. And they didn't even realize it. They're like, they had a, a urinal stick and then they didn't realize it. So we would, on a single-family dwelling, they make the repairs, we will, we will credit them the difference now or majority or?
It's really, it's really a case-by-case basis. And so they need to call into finance and discuss it with the, um, customer service manager.
Okay.
And they evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so water rate history. So the last rate study was adopted in 2016. The one prior to that was adopted in 2011. Again, you can see that period of time where the rates weren't covered by an approved rate study. And so, you know, through Proposition 218, you can't just, you can't just increase rates just because you want to. So you have to go through the process to identify, um, you have, show your methodology, identify what the, you're proposing for the rates, and then go through a protest procedure that your customers can do a majority protest to stop the rate increase. In both of these situations, we did not have a majority protest. And so the rate increases were approved by council. With the 2011 rate study, it didn't anticipate the drought. And so once the drought occurred in 2013, we were, we're kind of behind, uh, the curve there in that, um, we didn't have a mechanism to account for those lost revenues. And so you see that through the 2016 rate study is that, uh, we were then making up revenues through these, you know, significant rate increases. So one thing I would like to note, um, is that as part of the 2016 adopted water and wastewater ordinances, council included language that provides for council to review rates on an annual basis as part of the fiscal year budget review process prior to July 1st implementation of any increases for each year. So council also retained the authority to set rates by resolution, provided that they do not exceed the rates approved through the Proposition 218 process. So what does that mean? That means in May of this year, as part of your budget study session, I'm going to come before you and I'm going to recommend rates for this next fiscal year. With it being a new council, it would be great to have direction from council in terms of, uh, potential scenarios that you would like to see. You know, scenarios that I see is you have, what happens if you have zero rate increase? What happens if you go forward with the rate increase that was proposed in May of 2018? Or what happens if you do a, somewhere in between to cover kind of your, your inflation adjustment? And so at some point, um, you know, council can, can provide no direction and I'll come forward with a recommendation. Or there are options for council to provide direction in terms of different, different scenarios to present at that May budget study session so that, uh, you can have the information necessary to make the decision for the rates for fiscal year 1920. So this graph shows the revenue requirements with dark blue representing O and M expense, operation maintenance expenses, red representing debt service, and then green and yellow representing capital expenses. So what's important about this is if you look at fiscal year 19 right here, if we were to project that across, if we were to not do anything from this day forward and just keep the rates as they are today and project this across, you would see for a few years, we would be able to cover, again, the O and M and the debt service, but it would impact projects. And so that's something that council, um, will need to provide direction on in terms of that those rates, like I mentioned previously, cover O and M, debt service, and projects. And so, you know, moving forward with that, um, just to have an understanding of the direction that council wants to go. And then I spoke about this briefly earlier, this low-income water rate assistance. A draft report was issued earlier this month that talks about taxes on personal and business income, fees on water bottles or alcohol. We're part of the regional water authority and the regional water authority is preparing a letter response, uh, to submit to this report. Prior to that, there was discussions about, you know, taking a dollar of everyone's rates to put into this low-income rate assistance program. As you can see from our rates, I mean, we've, we, uh, we need to utilize every penny that we have. And so to have a dollar go to a state, uh, fund for low-income water rates, while there's definitely a need within our jurisdiction, it's difficult to take that money away from our rates when that wasn't part of the calculation when we were going through that 218 process. So existing wastewater rates, different than water rates in that single-family and multifamily pay flat rate. So it doesn't matter how much water they use, they just pay a flat rate. However, commercial, so non-residential, they pay a base rate, just a base rate regardless of how much water they use. But then in addition to that, they have a volumetric charge. And that volumetric charge is based upon their metered water usage. So here's the, uh, graph showing the wastewater rates for a single-family development. You can see this last year, council actually adopted rates less than the Proposition 218 amount. And then in May of 2018, we were projecting rates that would continue to be less than the Proposition 218 approved amount. And then for our industrial customers, they are based upon their actual impact on the plant. So you have volume, total suspended solids, and then BOD. And then for, so this is how Sun Suite, Valley Fine Foods, this is how they're charged. And then for septic haulers, um, there's a cost per gallon with a minimum charge of 400 gallons per dump. So our wastewater treatment facility is utilized a lot by our septic haulers, um, for the region. So for a monthly wastewater bill calculation, here's an example for a commercial, C1 commercial, which is C1, C2, C3, it's based upon the strength of their, um, wastewater. And so like for an office or something like that, very low strength versus a restaurant would be very high strength. So for C1 example, their monthly bill is based upon the base rate and then the water use times the flow rate. So if they had monthly water usage of 100 HCF, you'd have the base rate of $52.96 plus 100 HCF times the volumetric rate of $2.09 to get a total bill amount of $261.96. And then again, similar to water, here is the rate history for wastewater, single-family developments.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Thanks. So the, the methodology there for the commercial that, um, uses the, the flow rate of water, uh, for sewage, is that, is that common in the industry? Is that how, that's how it's done? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Because again, it goes back to you want to make sure that you're being equitable in how the costs are being spread. And so you're looking at, when you look at the volume of flows coming into the plant and then spreading that out amongst the different classes, um, you want to make sure that you're accounting for, you know, a single-family dwelling, for the most part, you can assume, make an assumption as to how much wastewater flow because you're not counting for irrigation or anything like that. So it's a pretty steady number. Um, and so you, most agencies base, charge it based upon their water usage. So again, here's the graph showing the wastewater revenue requirements, um, with the blue line being the projected under the, uh, 2016 proposed, or approved rate study. So this is just to show a bill comparison for a single-family dwelling, um, based upon average consumption. So winter, annual, summer. So winter bill where you might use seven HCF because it's just your indoor use. Their water bill would be $35.84. Their wastewater bill would be $52.96 for a total of $88.80. Under the Prop 218 approved amount, it would be $93.44. And then in the summer months where you would have, uh, higher usage, that bill would, the water bill would increase to $52.40, giving a total bill of $105.36. So this, the purpose of this slide is just to show how much, um, water consumption impacts the bill for a, a single-family dwelling. So for, as I mentioned previously, for fiscal year 1920 rates, there will be options for council to consider, um, at the budget study session. And then at that point in time, when we bring forward, um, we'd bring forward a resolution in June for council action to set the rates for fiscal year 1920. One, one point of contention, and I'm looking at Dale in the audience here, one point of contention has been the last two years when we have, uh, set the rates. They went into effect July 1st, which means that they apply to the June consumption numbers because we read the bill, we read the meter on the first of each year and then you receive your bill, uh, towards the end of that month. So when the rates go into effect on July 1st, it's actually utilizing June consumption. So that's been a, a little bit of a point of contention for some of our customers. So if there are no questions about rates, I'm going to move on to connection fees.
Through the mayor, um, Ms. Langley, how many, you gave us, you know, basically 95% of our connection for water was a 17,693, I think it was. How many sewer connections do we have that would be comparable to the single-family residence? Is it 17,006?
No.
Is it 20,000? Is it 2,000?
So I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you that I, I, don't quote me on this. I want to say it's about 11,000. But the reason being is that you have the entire, um, former Hillcrest water area that's not in the city limits, that receives water, that does not receive sewer. And then also the Tier Bueno area receives water and not sewer. And so you have a large portion of the water customers that do not have, that do not benefit from sewer, from the city.
Okay, uh, thank you. Can I get that number at some point in the future?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, on to connection fees. So connection fees are designed to recover the capital costs of the treatment plants and backbone transmission and collection lines for water and wastewater. They increase July 1st of each year based upon the engineering news record construction cost index. These maps are, um, very large, a little bit difficult to read. But these two maps represent the backbone infrastructure required to serve new development with water and wastewater in the future. The map on the left is the wastewater, uh, infrastructure plan developed as part of the 2006 wastewater system master plan. And the map on the right is from our recently completed water system master plan. So when we're calculating connection fees, we take these pipeline costs, the treatment plant costs to serve that new development, the, um, you know, for sewer, the lift stations for water, the tanks. You add up all of those costs divided by the number of, uh, equivalent dwelling units that you're going to have within the city to develop your connection fee. So fees are due at the owner's option at either the issuance of building permit or a certificate of occupancy. So for water, the amount of fee shall be those in effect at the time of building permit issuance. For wastewater, the amount of fee shall be those in effect at the time the fees are paid. So building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. So the reason I'm highlighting those two, um, portions in red is we have a discrepancy. And so, uh, we will be bringing forward as part of a larger municipal code update for public works to make these consistent because the issue with the water portion is that the building permit may be issued and then it takes two years to finish the project. Well, in the meantime, your connection fees have increased, but they're still paying. They could come in and pay their fees at the time of certificate of occupancy, but pay it based upon when the building permit is issued. Versus wastewater, whenever they pay it is when the fee in effect at the time they pay is what's due. And so, um, we'll be bringing forward as part of a larger municipal code update to correct these deficiencies. The other thing that's important to note is that the city does not, uh, provide an option for customers to finance connection fees over time, other than through an assessment district. So through an assessment district, customers can, uh, pay for the infrastructure and connection fees as part of their, um, annual taxes. But there's not, if you have, uh, you know, existing infrastructure and it's just a home that's adjacent to a water line where they want to connect to connection fees, they can't come in and make arrangements to pay, uh, payments on that over time. It has to be paid upfront. So again, the connection fee is the cost of the infrastructure to serve new development divided by the total equivalent dwelling units for. divided by the total equivalent dwelling units for build out of the sphere of influence. For the water connection fee, it's based upon meter size. So as the meter size increases, so does the connection fee. And so for instance, a two inch meter is based upon a maximum continuous flow rate of 100 gallons per minute versus a one inch meter is based upon 25 gallons per minute. You can see that the corresponding connection fee is also four times as much as a one inch meter. So waters, connection fees are very expensive. So if you need a four inch connection, you're paying $267,000 for that connection. Again, that's, what that connection fee covers is their share of the water treatment plant and their share of that backbone infrastructure to get the water to their property. So it's been many years since the current connection fees were evaluated. With the recent completion of the water treatment plan and distribution system master plan, staff will be updating the water connection fee and bring options to council for consideration. The estimated cost of infrastructure to serve new development and build out exceeds $360 million. And I've, I'd like to note, so with all of the legislation related to water usage and accounting for the reduction in per capita use, that was the main point of this master plan is to go through and reevaluate the sphere of influence to say, okay, if you have this many properties using that much less water, what does that do to our infrastructure? It reduced the diameter of the pipeline significantly. It also reduced the number of storage tanks significantly. But even with that, you have a price tag of 360 plus million dollars. So for wastewater connection fees, it's based upon residential versus non-residential units. So for a single family dwelling, it's $7,000 per unit. For commercial industrial, it's based upon fixture units. And so you have, you know, through the plumbing code, you have different fixtures that have different fixture units. And so for instance, a wash basin, so a sink is considered one fixture unit and a toilet is considered four fixture units. So if you have a bathroom in an office that has a toilet and a sink, they're going to pay a connection fee based upon five fixture units. And then we also have the West Yuba City Sewer Trunk Line Fee, which is an additional cost for properties located in the western portion of the sphere of influence. So again, with the completion of the water master plan, staff will be reevaluating the not, the water connection fee and bring it to council for direction. Council recently also authorized staff to proceed with the wastewater master plan update. So once the wastewater master plan is completed, staff will also be reevaluating the wastewater connection fee to bring toward, forward to council for consideration as well. So any questions on connection fees? Okay, outside connections. So the city periodically receives requests for connection to water and or wastewater from properties located outside of the city limits. I have to say, so during my time with the city, which I've worked with the city for 22 years, I've only see a handful of these requests come across. Typically what happens is you have a septic system that fails. And if they're within so many feet of a city sewer line, they're required to connect to city sewer. If their well fails, they're required to, if they're within so many feet of a water line, they're required to connect to city water. And in addition, the city occasionally receives requests from commercial or non-residential properties as well that want city water or sewer. So past practice, for many years, the city required property owners outside of the city limits to execute utility service connection agreements, stating that the property could connect to city services and in exchange must waive their rights to protest future annexations. So the oldest utility service agreement that I can find electronically dates back to September 1980. And then I went through the agreements that we have in our electronic system. I found about 60 agreements with the latest agreement dated 2004. So when you look at past practice, we don't have a written policy for how we deal with outside connections with the exception for a brief period in 2010 and in 2011, council adopted ordinances allowing all private well water users of record within the city's water service area, an opportunity to connect to city water without requiring utility service connection agreement. After 2011, the city had a large project to extend water to the west on Franklin Road to serve Franklin School. At the same time, water was provided to some subdivisions within that area. As part of that project, the city required annexation of those subdivisions. So options for council, and I want to note that I coordinated with, there was some previous question as to whether or not these utility service connection agreements were legal. Can you legally require somebody to waive their right to protest and annexation? And through working with the city attorney found that they are. And so council has several options for moving forward with outside connections, which include, you could allow properties connect with no requirements, not recommended by staff. You could allow properties to connect with the execution of an agreement. This would require that the city attorney prepare an agreement for council reviews, council review and approval before we actually apply it to a property. Another option would be to require annexation prior to connection to city services. This option ensures that the city has full jurisdictional control over property that is receiving city services. However, this option is not generally preferred by property owners as there would likely be additional costs involved to go through the annexation process and would delay their connection to city services. So at council's direction, staff can bring this as an item for council discussion and consideration at a future council meeting.
Through the mayor. The tri-party agreement, which I do remember, is that transferable? So if, if I sell my house to Councilwoman Espandola, but she doesn't want to annex, can she fight that agreement?
Thank you through the mayor. It depends on the terms of the agreement. Typically, these sorts of agreements are recorded and are a property interest. So any future buyer has noticed that there is this annexation requirement or they are receiving services from the city. So as long as it's a bona fide purchaser and they've done their research and done a title report like they typically do, anyone downstream of when that was recorded can't fight it. So it's there. There is a narrow exception for renters, less than 12 months. If you're a renter and you come in and you don't know, and you're not anticipated to actually know under the law, because you're only there for a short period of time, you usually don't do a title report when you rent. Then the courts have said, under those circumstances, we won't enforce against the, against the renters. But after about a year's time, it will be enforceable against all future property owners.
Okay, so any, is there, is it council's desire to bring this forward as a future discussion item?
I would definitely say so. Diana, it's very important that we get that hammered out.
Does she need, or does he need three head nods?
Just the mayor acting a notice alone is enough.
Tell my wife though.
All right. Any additional questions on outside connections? Okay, we're in the home stretch here. I'm getting into capital improvement program. So the capital improvement program, commonly referred to as the CIP, is a five-year plan for the maintenance and expansion of public facilities and infrastructure. The CIP is updated every year as part of the budget process. So how's the CIP developed? So it's developed several ways. You have the water and wastewater master plans, which I briefly discussed, in which you identify existing capital rehabilitation replacement projects and then also infrastructure to serve new development. You have operational needs identified by staff and you have regulatory requirements. So current CIP projects for water include the Berry School Water Transmission Line, the cellular water replacement project, groundwater well abandements, pressure surge relief facility is one of those projects I've identified through operations, water treatment plant, electrical instrumentation and control system improvements, the harder water tanks coating and the second groundwater well at the water treatment plant. So as I noted, the recently completed water treatment plan, distribution system master plan provides a recommendation for the CIP for the water treatment plant and distribution system. The master plan looks at a 20-year planning horizon to identify improvements and timing for the next 20 years. The current total estimated capital cost identified in the plan is over $100 million. So recommended key projects over just the next 10 years includes supply improvements, which would be additional, basically that aquifer storage recovery well at the water treatment plant. Minor modifications at the low lift pump station. Water treatment plant improvements, which would include chemical addition, rehabilitating the conventional filtration system, high service pump station and electrical SCADA improvements. The booster pump station tank improvements include significant rehabilitation of the Garden Highway, Row Avenue, San Brandon tanks, and then minor work such as coatings at the other reservoirs within the system. And then the pipeline replacement portion assumes replacing pipelines in the distribution system at a rate of 3 million per year, with one of the goals being to improve fire flows. So again, I mentioned previously, the current rate structure provides $1 million annually for pipeline replacement. Over the last 10 years, the city has received about $22 million in grants for water. So that includes stimulus water meter retrofit project in which we were able to put meters within the former Hillcrest water service, service area to ensure that the entire city was metered. The groundwater to surface water conversion, a raw water intake and pump station improvements, low lift pump station improvements, the Prop 84 waterline extension project, which was to get that water line to Franklin School. The recent cellular water service meter installation grant and then a second groundwater well at the water treatment plant, which is through the Bureau of Reclamation, which we're working on the funding agreement for that right now. Similarly for wastewater, current projects includes the wastewater treatment facility improvements, which was recently started. Wastewater system master plan update, wastewater collection rehabilitation project, Stonegate Treatment Works demolition. I don't know if you are familiar with the Stonegate subdivision. It's out in the Tier Bueno area. They're on a very, very unique system. And one of the things that we need to do is demolish the, the treatment, the former treatment plant there. The wastewater treatment facility chlorine contact basin rehabilitation and then the outfall diffuser replacement. Here is a table showing wastewater grants received over the last eight years. So you have the wastewater treatment facility improvements, downtown sewer replacement and recycled water study for wastewater treatment facility. I would be very remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mandeep Choham's efforts in a lot of these, these grants. He is tenacious when it comes to pursuing grants and he really does an excellent job in trying to get money that we can utilize for projects that we've identified. So to recap, council will have several opportunities to provide input on items related to water and wastewater. We have the rates. The current study provides two more years of approved increases. And staff, this is important. So staff would normally begin working on the next rate study in late 2019, early 2020, as the current rate study period ends June 30th, 2021. So rate study takes a significant amount of time to go through and collect all the financials, update the rate models. And what takes a lot of time is coming up with the different options to present as part of that rate study to see what council wants to move forward with in terms of a proposition 218 process. And so staff will need direction from council related to that. Connection fees with the recent completion of the water master plan, staff will be bringing forward options for connection fees. Outside connections, so receive direction tonight to bring forward that for consideration. The capital improvement program, the fiscal year 1920 CIP will be coming for council in May and June for consideration. And then the municipal code updates, in which we'll be bringing a more comprehensive package for several updates that need to take place for public works. So with that, are there any questions?
Diana, the Stonegate property cleanup. By any chance on the cleanup of that was the city thinking about selling the property to help cover, cover our costs?
We would bring that to council for their direction in terms of disposal of that property. There's been many discussions in terms of what to do with that property, one of which being to sell. Another discussion has been related to turning that into a little like pocket park for the subdivision. So it would be, council would need to have a discussion about what to do with that property.
Okay, thank you Diana.
Diana, thank you very much for that presentation. It's very detailed. And I do want to provide you with some direction if, if I have concurrence here regarding your water and wastewater rates. You mentioned three options. I think if we put some effort and work into proposing three off, options, one on each side of the spectrum, one down the middle, perhaps I will offer a framework for some discussion amongst us. And if we have to hybridize a little bit, back and forth, one way or the other. I think that would be a good way to go about that. And I would appreciate that. Same thing with the connection fees. Outside connections, you already have three options laid out there, which are, which are good. And I have a question on the capital improvement program. There's a slide. The recommended projects out for 10 years, the 60 million plus dollars. Do you know how much, if any, of that could possibly be funded by grants? We have, we have our eyeball on any grants to help supplement that 63 million? Is that basically a wish list?
Well, if it's related to where you can reduce your water usage or you can reduce your energy consumption, there are grants out there. For a lot of these projects, they don't necessarily fall under that category. Sometimes you can get creative in terms of if it's a pipeline that's leaking, that you can show that you're reducing your water loss and you're reducing your overall energy costs because you're not having to account for pumping out that volume of water. So there, there could be some opportunity. There could also be some opportunity for low interest loans through the state revolving fund. But it's really dependent kind of upon what's, what's happening at that time and where the emphasis is at the state and federal level.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Through the mayor, Ms. Langley, the other issue that we need to take in consideration is the governor's budget proposal. You mentioned bottled water and such. Part of that, he's also indicated he wants to put a supplemental tax on your water bill as, as it is. So we're looking at potentially our water bills going up anyway because of the state. That is to help mitigate the cost for underfunded, and I can't remember the exact word that was in the, the budget, but struggling water districts. If the government's, if the governor's proposal goes through, we're going to be at the state's mercy on that. But do you have any indication that we may qualify to get some funds back to help any of these projects if he taxes our water bills and he taxes bottled water?
Yeah. So with that recent report that was issued earlier this month in regard to that low income rate assistance proposal, it's interesting because they specifically identified Yuba City. And so the threshold that they're using is 200% of the poverty level, the federal poverty level. What they said in that study is that Yuba City, 81% of our customers meet that threshold. So if they were to use that methodology, then there's a very large portion of our customer base that could potentially qualify for a low income rate assistance program. But I haven't seen any language specific to his to know what the threshold would be. But I, any type of low income rate assistance program, I would think that there's a good portion of our population that could qualify for that.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I almost forgot Spencer wanted to make a quick clarification, please.
Thank you Diana. Spencer Morrison, accounting manager. I just wanted to mention, directed to Councilman Shaw, regarding the cost allocation plan true up. We do not do a true up, but we do base our cost allocation plan on last year's actuals. So it's not, it's not a wag, but it is a year behind. So I thought I would try to give you that clarification so you didn't leave thinking that we were using budgeted numbers or projected numbers for the cost allocation plan.
Through the mayor, Spencer, thank you. And I figured for the sake of the evening that I appreciate you stepping up, but this will be a conversation as we go forward that we will, we will figure out and, and I do appreciate your input and I look forward to sitting down with you further.
Thank you. And then with your permission, just for further clarification on, on And then if, with your permission, just for further clarification on, on leaks and how finance handles, handles leaks. You could hear Councilman Cardo's is kind of trying to get clarification on how leaks are handled. And it's, it's very, it's not very often, while, while time to time, there is, you know, the charges for consumption is written off. It's pretty rare that that's the case. Because the way finance views it is that the cost has already been incurred and by the system. And so if the homeowner who's having a maintenance problem in their house, in their property, isn't responsible, then it makes all the other ratepayers responsible for that cost. And so we, we take that very seriously. And it's not a very common thing for us to saddle the rest of the ratepayers with one property owner's maintenance issues.
Okay. Thank you, Spencer. Thank you, Spencer. All right, nothing further? All right. With that being said, we're going, it's 6:53 according to iPhone here. We're going to take a 20-minute break. We'll come back at 10 after 7. Give us a chance to test out our wastewater treatment facility, I think. All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll call us back to order. We have one comment from Diana, who wants a clarification from her presentation.
So the question about how many single family dwelling sewer customers do we have? It's approximately 12,700. And we have a total of about 14,700 sewer customers. So single family dwellings, about 12,700 and multi-family is about 1,000.
Good. Thank you again, Diana.